At this time, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Uh, roll call please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Doug Huestead.
Brian Mahon.
Present.
Katarziewski, present.
Tony Brabilske.
Present.
Thank you very much, Pat. Glad to see everybody tonight. For those that are able, please stand. We're going to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have a virtue card this evening?
We do. Today's virtue card is fortitude. Fortitude is strength of character. It's the will to endure no matter what happens with courage, confidence, and patience. Fortitude is deeply rooted in the bedrock of our will. We cultivate it by strengthening our resolve to face whatever comes. It springs from devotion to a purpose we believe to be real and important. It grows as we face and overcome insurmountable obstacles. It keeps us going. Our fortitude can astonish us. Hold your precious heart steadfast in fortitude until the siege is past and you will be duly nourished. The practice of fortitude. I have the will to survive. I have the patience to endure. I am guided by a clear purpose. I know what I care about. Whatever life brings makes me stronger. I have amazing endurance. I'm thankful for the gift of fortitude. It is the strength of my soul. Okay, the fortification is developed on guidelines. With an open mind, we'll establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We worked toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain any public comments. And we don't have any public. Seat of emergency.
Nathan, do you have anything you want to share?
Primarily, they were talking about that they've pretty much got the contract finalized. There's some, they just checked in with the state. There's a little bit of language that they're going to need to amend that, but it's pretty much, I believe they've already got some signatures. They're just going to finalize that and that's the last little bit on that.
That's great. Thank you. What is Academy, do we have?
No.
Okay, very good.
But I will say real quickly, last night, we had a showcase night. And the showcase is designed to bring families in. And then the families share curriculum ideas that they have. And last night, we had a guest speaker come and talk about curriculum packages and then different types of curriculum to meet the needs of varying learners. And then also talked quite in-depth about language arts. So we had about 17 families show up and it was really good conversation. So we spent about three hours together and some new families. So exciting.
Thank you, Terry. Overarching results. Each month, we review our overarching results. And the overarching results policy reads us as follows. Nukus School District develops students who excel academically, act responsibly, display good character and citizenship. Reason and they demonstrate reason and solve problems rationally. We focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global economy and global community. And today, we're very, very fortunate to have Mr. Paul Leepair here today. And Mr. Leepair, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Well, thanks for allowing me to come. It was April 10th last year that I was here to kind of unroll or roll out the framework for how I was taking on. So technically, and I've got a summary that we'll look at on the screens here, but my title is Family School Community Outreach Liaison. It took me four months to memorize that. I don't usually introduce myself like that. In a nutshell, I'll tell people what you do. I say, "Do community outreach." They get that. But I will say with the framework, I use that framework in developing my 100-day plans. And so I'm in the fourth iteration of 100-day work plan. So what I do is I look at the intersection between those spheres. So the work that's done in community and school between those two spheres, work that's done between school and family and those nets where that intersects, and then where work intersects with family and community. And I want to go through just, so that's how I think about the job. That's how I develop my 100-day work plans. We meet with John about every other week and we talk about that. And like I said, I'm in the fourth iteration of that. I'm happy to say that each of those areas has kept me pretty busy. So, and then what I have is about two and a half, about two pages of just some bullet points. I'm not going to read all this, but I want to go through some of the highlights from each of those connections of kind of the work that I've been doing. And then I want to leave some time for Q and A real quick if you feel wanted. So you all had this email to you, I think, too, so you can read it in detail if you want to. So let me just go to the page two there. And let's look at these focus areas. So again, wherever I see those, I really, I keep in mind, you know, I'm funding, so my activity has to be revolving around community activities. So I try not to get sidetracked into other things because if you've been in the schools for any period of time, you know there's things you can do.
Right?
But I try to keep in mind what I'm supposed to be doing. So let me go to the first area of community and school. So this is that intersection of agencies and organizations, our community, and how do we interact with them? How do they interact with us? And how do we leverage partnerships with them and relationships? Let me touch a few of these because there's some very, if you read the newsletter, last newsletter, wrote an article on the Handle with Care program. This is a program that we were able to start with a partnership with the police department and actually other agencies. Since then, Chief Woods is able to reach out to some of the other, because we have multiple jurisdictions in our school district, law enforcement agencies. So basically what the Handle with Care program is, and we got it from, well, it actually stemmed out of a chaplain call that I had. I volunteered as a chaplain for the PD. And it was back in September, we had a pretty bad situation. And I was in, on the debrief team for that. As we were debriefing, I found out that we had two kids at Humke, one other schools that were at Humke, but other schools too that were there. And we didn't know about it until a week later when I was on that debrief. And I thought, "That has to change." And we did some searching around. West Virginia has a program called Handle with Care. We had already developed a kind of an MOU between the police department and us. So basically what it does is if there's an incident where there's a, one of our students is on scene, it could be a domestic, the drug, or a death scene, that we're notified. And then we immediately, Pupil Services team needs, we immediately kick out an email to whatever staff or teachers that need to know on a very general level. They don't get details. They basically get an email that says, "Handle this student with care." And we've had, I think we've used it four or five times now. Yeah.
Working the case out by.
Yeah. And I'm happy to see it too. So I started, I wanted to find out and make sure, actually, when I wrote the article for the newsletter, if we could use their logo because I didn't know if it was trademarked or whatever. So I called West Virginia, talked to the gal. She works for their State Patrol and their, because they're statewide. Every school does this in West Virginia. So I talked to her and she said, "Oh, you use it all." In fact, as I did other research, Michigan has the same program. Their website looks exactly the same. And I said, "Is that on Michigan's website?" And she said, "Yeah, we did their website. We would do your website or you can rip it all off." So I called her and then I got ahold of someone. Janeville is the only other district in the state that does this. And when I talked to the gal in West Virginia, she said, "By the way, there's a professor at University of Milwaukee, Wisconsin-Milwaukee, that is interested in going statewide, helping get this thing statewide." So I say that, we might be on the front end. Yeah. So I'm pretty proud to say that it's working great. We've got the case worked out. It's working well. So a great opportunity. That's just an example of one of the kind of community-school partnerships that we have with the police force. We also, a couple bullet points down, we started a partnership with Forward Service Corporation there. So a few years ago, the state privatized social services. Forward Service Corporation does the W-2 program and some other programs now. And so we were able to partner with the W-2 program. We have one volunteer at Humke. She came in and her work, in their work experience program, she actually gained experience volunteering. So we benefited from that and she's there a lot. She benefited by the work experience and actually was hired at AMS now. Well, that's Wendy Janison. She does part-time aid work over there. So it worked out really great. So that's an example of that. We have also started a, building a relationship, a little tighter relationship with UW Stevens Point. Their nursing program, we have a student right now doing her calf stone project in, at Humke. And Jim doing it around health. And so she is, she's interested in seeing that what she's doing with the kids continue. So that's, that's a new one as well. I also serve and represent the district on our local hunger coalition. Been with Stuff the Bus, Stuff the Desk for about 10 years. So now I just represent the district instead of, I used to be CLF. So that's just a few things. There's a lot more going on in that area that you can read about. And that's where the school and the community intersects. The other, one of the other three is the family and community. So that role of mine is really very closely tied to Brian, to Brian's role in pupil services. And we're still working on this. I have had up to about 10 families on a caseload. It could be anything with helping families connect with services, obtain medication for their students, find clothes for kids, you name it. It's all that felt need kind of stuff. I would, when I explain to people what I do in this area, I say, "This is kind of that social, social work plate that I spin a little bit." There's some work to be done here. And Brian and I are talking some of that. We can talk to John, just streamlining things, making sure that we're not duplicating services. And we're still working on that. But basically, that's that social work piece. The last area is where the school and the family intersect. This would be that family engagement piece. And we all know how important that is in education. We were able to start some new things. In fact, we have brand-new news. As of yesterday, we reached our minimum quota to be able to offer Born Learning Academy.
Oh, good.
So it's going. We got a dozen. We needed five. And we were working the phones and we ended up with a dozen. So that's a new partnership. So that is, Born Learning Academy is for pre-K families and kind of takes the place of, we used to do the Ready for Kindergarten program. That, but that's a partnership between us and United Way. So there's another community-school connection, right? And they have a new person, which I happen to know, which is great. Jody Friday is doing that. And we formed that partnership and it truly is, it's been a win-win. Saved us quite a bit of money. We're doing this for about a third of what we would've spent on the whole Ready for Kindergarten program.
Awesome.
So again, it's an awesome curriculum. It's six nights, so it's even deeper. The curriculum is great. It's, if you're familiar with the Raising Highly Capable Kids program, the curriculum is very similar, just geared at younger ages. So my goal is to build a pipeline to that class. So we're not shaking the trees every year trying to find five families. So we reached out to all the preschools in the area in Rapids. I mean, we're not just talking to Nukusa. All the headstarts in the area, Wood County Social Services, Wood County Foster Care. I've had face-to-face with all of those people trying to build a pipeline. So we can keep offering. My, my plan would be to offer the Born Learning Academy for the PK parents in the spring and then Raising Highly Capable Kids in the fall. And I've reconnected with the leadership of the Raising Highly Capable Kids. We're still fairly early talking about, we need to repackage it, probably pare it down right now. That, that course is 13 weeks and I think that was an issue with, you know, people deciding, you know. So we're rethinking that, but we're working on that. Done some other things in the family school, with family engagement things. Most of the work, I'll say, just in general, this first year has been focused on Humke because we talked about, especially in family engagement kind of things. It's important that we reach our families young and then hopefully we can walk with them through the whole 12 years of their kids' education, 13 or 14 years of the kids' education. My goal is, hopefully this summer with Nathan, to begin to talk about how I might be able to start working at AMS. My job is going to look differently at every school. I can tell you that. And I think, I don't know this, but I'm guessing when it's full-blown and I'm doing everything, it's probably still going to be like 60, 30, 10 at those schools. I'm guessing because we have to focus on, I believe, and I think leadership is talking about, we have to focus on the younger end so that we have families stable and well because they're coming through school soon.
Keith would probably argue.
Yeah, I wanted to show that with a stick on this, man. You got the short straw. Again, that's just, I'm just spitballing that. I just know that there's always going to be a little bit more work on the younger end. And I think that's important. That is like the 50,000-foot view. And I mean, I could talk. I looked at the agenda and there's really no minutes by name, so I'm going to be kind. And I think I'm going to stop there because I don't, if you have questions, I want to.
Yeah, let's ask some questions.
Can you, can you talk about how your position is being received, I guess, in the community with these other agencies you're working with, with families in our district?
Yeah.
And then I guess more for the, probably for John and Brian is how it's looking at, at Humke? How it's, what are we, are we seeing some benefits? So I've had two questions there.
Okay.
Brian, you want you to.
Yeah. I've been working, receiving very well in the community and with the families we've been working with. This has been a very easy transition for me as far as that work. The hard part was learning the education land, if you will, right? I mean, I was in teacher education way back in the eighties, but hadn't worked in the schools in a while other than coaching and subbing. So that was the hard part. The easy part, I didn't lose any relationships. In fact, I brought them all with me, I would say. So with like the Hunger Coalition, we talked.
Yeah.
I wrote their speech plan with them. I led that. So a lot of those relationships I had in the community, those are like Jody Friday being hired on United Way. That was awesome because I knew when she was at UW Extension. And that's just many years of being involved in coalitions in the community. Families have been great to work with. I have not had any, like, if I think about that social work piece I've been doing, I haven't had any pushback. Families, we've got some hurting families and they know it. And they're usually pretty receptive to the help and grateful for it. I haven't had any issues or just good reports.
One of the things that Brian and I have talked about regards to Paul and his position, again, as he moves throughout our district, but really working in a relationship with our school counselors. So right now, in many ways, he's working to support them and be a resource to them. And for Rod, you know, in his role and what, and what we're trying to do is, you know, Rod, in the truest sense, doesn't really wear a counselor hat because of some of the challenges that we're working through and trying to get. So in many ways, it's kind of like Paul has been able to, "I can get that from you and provide this social service aspect of helping connect these things up there." So that, that's a little bit of a resource that he is for us as a building. And I'd say, you know, something like that will revolve in the other buildings to really falling under, Brian and I have talked about this, but really falling under, you know, Brian's portfolio of responsibilities with the counselors and leading them and helping that person to connect with those counselors.
From the Student Services Society, it's been great having Paul because some of our families, because within the Student Services realm, we also cover homeless and foster care and things of that nature. So he's been a resource that help to that families can talk to. And there are times we've had to pick stuff up with families and it's like, "All right, Paul or I can run and go grab that and take," you know, "Who has the time to grab it?" But then, as well as when we're doing planning, as part of, you know, this year's school safety has been a big topic. So with his knowledge also as chaplain for the police department while we're planning, because we always have the plan of what we do in the event, but what do we do afterwards counseling-wise, things like that? As the counselors and I are talking about that, Paul's also in those conversations to say, "Here's what we could do if there's a, a large event crisis" versus, "Hey, it may be one student unexpectedly passed away." So he's been in those conversations, helping us plan things from that aspect as well. So bringing his perspective from his experiences has been great. So we're working on things student services-wise as well that has helped.
So question I have is, so could you talk a little bit about, so how do, like, teachers, if, do they know how to access Paul? And talk maybe a little bit about what that looks like? If they have a need and they think, "Gosh, Paul could help."
Yeah, that's some of the bullets here. So I try to regularly, the teachers have been great. And I was very intentional in coming in. I built the bridge there right away. And the first message to the teachers was, "I'm here as a resource for you. I'm not here to bring you any work or to create work for you. I'm here to help these kids that are struggling, families that are struggling. I'm another resource for you, helping you out." I sit on most, a lot of the communities that were, I'm on the early chaplain literacy, all for that lens of family engagement. So I try to stay out of the weeds where I don't need to be and focus on the things I need to be focused on. Yeah, but it's been, starts with teachers and they want to access me. They walk by my office a lot. They're by the lounge, so they can't miss me. But yeah, it was good, you know, and it has been great. I meet with each grade level. They meet during the days, different days of the week. So the only questions I have for them, "How can I access you? Can I come to your meetings?" And they're, they can create, you know, they're always great to say, "Yeah, drop in." And sometimes we'll just go and listen in just to hear what's going on in the classroom. So I can understand what's going in classrooms too. If I have to answer questions that families have about curriculum or what goes on in the classroom, you know, I'm just more well-informed. So it's been great. They've been very welcome. I, I calendar, I have it on my calendar when they meet. I try to make, rotate through each grade at least once a month because they meet weekly. So four grades, I kind of give one a week kind of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Leepair, for the work that you've done.
Thanks for the opportunity. Do you ever have any questions? Please call and ask them.
Okay. Thank you. We very much appreciate the update. Next, we have Brian, girl, can you forward? Is there anything that you'd like to discuss this week?
Just working on our civil rights data report. So that's every other year report. So it's a nice, about 60-page report that I have to submit. So it is. So I've been working on that and that's what I'll be working on over spring break. So if you want to come in and give me a break, you're more than welcome.
Thank you. You have to lunch yourself?
Exactly. Got to put a plug in there, so come on in, say hi.
That's a paid lunch. It's a 60-page report.
That's what I'm working on.
Good luck on that. And try to get some time away on spring break.
We'll try.
Will you do that, Brian?
I'll try.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. And Ms., Ms. Nate?
Yeah, I have two things to go over and it will be quick. I sent out the audit bids and they are due into the district on this Friday. So far, we have one bid from Hawkins Ash. I did receive a call from Whitley asking if they should bother to bid. And I told them that it is completely up to them, that I'm not going to tell them what to do. But if they had a reason why they provided us the poor service that they did last year, I would listen. So I have not received a bid from them yet. I also want to talk a little bit about what happened last week in our technology department. We had a network outage. It happened on Friday about 3:00 in the afternoon. And if, if there was a chance to win the lottery based on what happened in our, in our technology department, I would've won. Because the chances of this happening were a billion to one. We have a server and then we have a backup server. So with our, if current server goes down, our backup server is supposed to automatically kick in and everything should be seamless. Well, there was some hardware that went down in the first server and simultaneously hardware went down in the second server and everything was dead in the water. So that happened at Friday about 3:00. Sonata and Eric were working diligently all weekend long. I was on conference calls with Hartland, with Sonata, with, with Eric on Sundays, trying to get everything back up and running. Well, the parts that they had ordered weren't going to be in until Tuesday, so the earliest it was going to be out was by Wednesday. The good thing, if there is a good thing in this situation, everything was covered under warranty. So we didn't have to pay for anything. Secondly, we had time to communicate to the staff on early Sunday morning. And the staff were amazing. They were absolutely amazing. Not one, not one single complaint that I heard of. They completely understood and they just adjusted their teaching and learning for our kids. So I, I can't thank the staff enough about this. So in the meantime, we did get everything back up and running on Wednesday. But come to find out, we were very, very, very lucky because we didn't lose any data. There was a big concern that we would've lost all of our data. So we had a meeting this past Monday with Hartland and our technology department and we went over a post-mortem meeting. And we're, there are some things that we've decided that we need to work on. One is a comprehensive plan to look at all of our systems to see what is updated. Also to see what type of sources we can, we can actually house someplace else. For example, our Power School. Right now, we house Power School in the Nukus School District. For a very small fee, we can have that housed or outsourced at Marsha Brenner and she would charge us a very minimal fee on an annual basis. It's like a service. But then if anything happens with our technology, that data is safe. Same with Skyward. Right now, we have servers in the district with Skyward. If our servers go down, we're done. But if we could outsource that and have the servers in the cloud or have the information in the cloud and have somebody else outsource it, then our data would be safe. So we're, we're trying to look at all of the aspects of, aspects of the technology department on what we need to maintain, what we need to update, and really just get a comprehensive five-year plan so we know exactly what we need to spend moving forward. The mistake that we made was that we have a beautiful system, but we haven't been maintaining it. And when you purchase a beautiful system like that, you have to maintain it. So that was a big light bulb that went out with us. Also, we never tested our backup. So we are, we are planning some testing for our backup to make sure that it's doing what we, what we think it should do, but we want to test it. We've never done that before. So there was a good meeting. It was a learning experience. Not that I'm glad that it happened, but I'm glad the outcome is what it was because we didn't lose any data. We lost a couple of days of, of work in our systems, but it could've been so much worse. So know that we're working on it. And when we do have a comprehensive plan, our technology will come back to the board and we will present it to you.
Yeah, it's, I come to rely on common information and almost just make, it's always going to be there.
Yeah.
It just kind of reminds us that deep things can go wrong. Thank you very much, Lynn, for your update and, and, you know, pass on the thanks to Hartland and Sonata and all of your work and stuff.
And you know, another, another caveat of this is that Sonata, you know, plans on retiring probably in the next three years. So the more that we automate and outsource, the better off we're going to be sitting as a district too. So we're trying to look into the future to try and plan for the future instead of, you know, being a reactive. We want to be proactive.
Thank you very much, Lynn.
Technical Excellence Scholarship Approval.
Yes. I talked to Rachel and she said that you.
She didn't tell me, no.
We can, we can do that next month.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good. That brings us to policy governance. The results policy that we're looking at this month is self-directed thinkers. And the policy itself indicates that it's a, it's a pretty generic, it's pretty, pretty, there's not much here. Well, there is, but it says, "All students are creative, self-directed thinkers, prepared for, prepared for, and able to adapt to a changing world. Students will use information from a variety of sources to solve problems and make independent decisions." "Students will use information from a variety of sources to solve problems and make independent decisions." "They will be able to set priorities and goals, assess personal progress, and make appropriate adjustments." "Plan and prepare for challenging careers based on personal interests and strengths." "Demonstrate resilience and patience with the ability to cope with adversity." In our Thursday workshop last week, we looked at the work that has been completed on this and it's really amazing, the body of work that's been done by Humke Element, by Humke, by AMS and also the high school. This policy, the question I asked last week was to the administrators was, how hard was it to answer these questions? And it was, we were met with some differing responses and I think we can make improvements in that policy. So, we are going to look at that policy and it's something I'd like your help with administration. You know, again, that body of work that was there, I think, hit on the mark of what we're trying to do with our students in creating self-directed thinkers. But I think we can change that policy a little bit. The board determined that the weaknesses that were addressed in 2018 had been resolved. "The strengths, the proponents of evidence indicates that strong programs are in place in all three schools." "Advisories are a strength throughout." "And that evidence exists that students are challenged to the level of their abilities." Brian Mahan actually shared a personal story about his daughter being provided more difficult reading material to challenge her at a level appropriate to her abilities. Did I state that correctly, Mr. Mahan? Okay. And so, there's some, you know, that, this, what I read there doesn't really do justice to the body of work that's been completed. But again, it's just amazing, the programs that are in place. Suggestions for improvement? "Evaluate the possible involvement of parents to support our work to build self-directed thinkers." And that, you know, really wasn't in the policy, but you know, parents are definitely part of helping reinforce, you know, what we're trying to do. And then again, just a suggestion for improvement. "Strengthen or build a bridge between AMS and NHS in planning and preparing students for the academic and career planning based on personal interests and strengths." And again, you know, wording in there, you guys, you know, I trust Mr. Black and Mr. Johnson that you understand kind of what that discussion was about and, you know, you are, you guys have a full understanding of what kind of we're looking for, I think. At this time, with those strengths and suggestions for improvement, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we find ourselves in compliance with the results policy, our three self-directed thinkers.
So move.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. OE2 discipline. This is a review. This was actually on the agenda for last month. However, we had an additional workshop. We actually discussed this three times. And I think it was important that we put that time into it. And in this last workshop, we formally as a board, formally as a board, found ourselves in compliance with the discipline policy. We did find, we did note the following exceptions. Stakeholders, this is with regards to our discipline policies throughout. And the exceptions were stakeholders struggle with both a perceived and real lack of consistency with regards to disciplinary practices throughout the district. This may in part, this may be in part due to the use of restorative justice practices. Any one-size-does-not-necessarily-fit-all approach. Discipline as it's applied is different in different circumstances. And that's really hard for some, you know, it's hard to understand that. But, you know, it's a strength that you look at the individuals, you look at the situations on a case-by-case basis and determine the appropriate discipline. Adequate resources. Is the district providing enough support to staff and students around the challenges associated with trauma and inclusionary practices to provide for a sustainable and engaging learning environment? Resources are always an issue and as we face some of the budget issues that we're facing, resources will continue to be a struggling issue. And again, I want to thank all of the work that was done by our administrators, Terry and all of the other administrators. There were some really hard conversations around this policy. And I want to congratulate the fellow board members for being very frank and very, very, very direct in the concerns that you had. So, I think good came out of a difficult situation and thank you very much for your time, gentlemen. So, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to find OE12 in compliance with the noted exceptions. Motion on the floor. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. GP11, board member violations. GP11 is a guiding principle and Terry, do you just want to summarize that?
How about in the interpretation? I interpret this policy to mean that the board values the accountability of each individual board member. "The board shall be diligent in holding each other accountable for willful and for continued violations of board governance policy." "Board members will monitor their own behavior and when necessary, individual board members will bring items of concern to the board president."
Thank you, Terry. And this policy was discussed at Thursday's workshop and in addition emailed to all the board members. There were no non-compliances noted, no violations noted. I'd like to call for a motion to approve policy governance, GP11, board member violations.
So move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Consent agenda? Any comments that people would like to make? I would, I would, I would, I'd like to just throw out a big thank you to Airgas.
Why don't we put that picture?
We, Airgas made a substantial contribution to our technology department. Mr. Dorhorse actively worked with Airgas and he's been a champion for, you know, trying to get equipment donated. And Airgas came forward and gave us a donation equivalent to approximately thirteen thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So, that's a, I mean, they came and they're providing our students with this equipment. Is there something you'd like to mention, Mr. Johnson?
Sure. Whoa. So, Nukusa High School was one of thirteen schools across the country and the only rural school that was chosen for this. It's a new grant program that Airgas started this year. And really, Nukusa was considered because of work that Mr. Dorhorse had done over the summer with A and B up in the Marshfield area. And then, from there, it was hooked in with Airgas and so, it's really been, you know, neat to watch it all unfold and develop. But yeah, it's really been phenomenal.
So, these welders are replacing some old welders that have been handed out?
And helping to reorganize the room and, I mean, and what they can do compared to what was in the room is remarkable.
And these pictures represent a meeting that took place last week, Monday, where the Airgas officials came down to our school and did a formal presentation of the equipment. So, a big shout out to Airgas, Mr. Dorhorse and Mr. Johnson and everybody that, the efforts in that area. So, thank you, Airgas.
Yes, thank you. No, I'm good. But I'm just wondering, that sign, can we get that someplace, so that people can, you know, it's outdoors or, I don't know where we put it, but give it some thought. I don't know, did they put it in the hallway now? Or is it still in there?
Still in, yeah.
Okay. Awesome.
I wanted to take that one, but do you want to take the other donations, Greg?
Yep. Alright, so Backpack for Kids donations, United Church of Christ donated eight large garbage bags full of breakfast items. And we have ninety dollars from Sacred Heart Collection. So, thank you to those donors.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other discussion items on consent agenda before I call for a motion?
I just want to say, Mr. Conant is resigning as our HES special education teacher. So, he was with us for a year and he is going back to us from the southern area of the US, so Florida area. So, he's going back to that area, but we think a first time in service, so.
Too much snow in this February?
Yeah, a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mahan. And thank you, Mr. Conant, for your time here in Nukusa. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Future agenda items. The workshop for next month, the normal workshop that we do on Thursday nights, we're not going to have that. We don't have an operational expectation. The issues are pretty straightforward. However, we do need to schedule a board workshop at some point between now and next month. And this is regarding our discussions for planning for a sustainable financial future. You know, with us passing the budget in the red this last, for this year, we have some big challenges in front of us. We as a board need to continue these conversations. So, if it's okay, Diana, would you mind trying to figure a date where you'd like us to try to throw one out right now? Do you want, Terry, do you want, what dates are you available? I know that you weren't available for that.
Yeah, let's have Diana work on it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Diana, thank you so much. And it shouldn't be a very long meeting, gentlemen, maybe an hour.
Yeah.
Anything you'd like to add to that, Terry?
Well, the other thing that we, Brian and I talked this afternoon, Lynn, and I want to touch base with you on the nutrition program update. So, we thought maybe we could have Jim either do like a video and we could just push it out to the board or we could have him here.
It's up to the board.
Do you think he'd do that?
He will do anything that the board deserves.
Whatever's easiest for him.
I'll ask him.
I like the idea of a little video.
Okay. Okay.
If, if he wants.
Just kind of state of how things are going.
Sure.
Okay.
Anything else, gentlemen? This may have, we're going to, we at this point are going to be adjourning in a closed session. I want to thank everybody for your time here this evening. Administrators, thank you for your work. It's always appreciated, these long days I give it to you. Especially with all the water that's been in your houses. You're up next, you know that?
No.
We're coming to bailing if we put the water away.
Thank you, Mr. Leavere.
I asked her, I says, how's the water nowadays?
Okay, at this, anything before I make this next motion?
Well, next month, I think either April or May, we're going to have Chad Dorhorse here. Then, do we have any other overarching, does the board have any interest in hearing from any particular group? Are you liking this, how we're kind of finding?
I think the overarching results are important because to me, they highlight items that we're doing within our school district that focus on the mission or vision that we have for our district. And, you know, maybe we'll brainstorm on that, Terry.
Well, I thought about what Brian had shared about his daughter. And could we actually maybe have John, Jackie come and just talk about Reader's Writers Workshop and Language Workshop and what it looks like and how that does meet the varying needs of kids in a classroom?
For April.
Well, April or May, we're working with Chad Dorhorse to see what month he wants.
April, we had Jen and Megan coming. We talked about it before.
Okay. So, we've got kind of a lineup.
There's, you know, I've been involved with some of the workshops where I've heard some success stories from teachers talking about students. You know, one I remember, gentlemen, you might be able to recall which workshop it was, but I think it was one of our teachers, Ms. Bradle, or a student said something to the effect, I didn't know I was that smart. And those are the kind of things that, you know, we focus a lot of time to the negative, but we have a lot of positive things going on with the current practices. And those are the things that we want to highlight in the overarching results. Is that a fair statement? And, you know, I would encourage all board members, if there's things that you'd like to see, please don't hesitate to contact Terry or myself. As we're building the agenda for each month, you know, this is one topic that sometimes we need some help with. Thank you, guys, for the work on that. Okay, consideration of motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one C to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Motion on the floor.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Stan. Brian Mahan?
Yes.
Taraszewski, yes. Cody Pavilsky, yes. Brian, easy?
Yes. We had a roll call, I don't know if you can do this, but all in favor, please signify by saying aye. We are now going into closed session. In closed session. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. This is very.